The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks so much for joining us tonight. My name is Jennifer Dixon, and I'm going to be moderating tonight. I work with Eagle in our Environmental Support Division. And as you can see, we've got ourselves on camera tonight, so it's kind of exciting for our Air Quality Division. Before we get started with the logistics of the meeting and kind of how things are going to work tonight, I did want to just pass it over to Mary Ann Dolehand to you just for a minute, so she can kind of give you guys a little welcome introduction, and then we'll get into the nitty-gritty details. So, Mary Ann, if you wanted to say a few words, go right ahead.
Sure. So, thanks, everybody, and thanks, Jennifer, for that introduction. And I just wanted to say thank you for... Personally, thank everyone for taking time out of their evening to participate in this public meeting. I think it's very important that we get input from community on the actions and work that we're doing. And we do know that nothing is normal right now, and this crisis has affected people in a lot of different ways, a variety of ways. It's not the way we would typically conduct our public participation process, and we do understand that it's not perfect. So, thank you again for joining us, and I do invite you to contact staff even after tonight if you have further questions, comments, or concerns, not only about the draft consent order that we're here to talk about tonight, but the general public participation process. We're trying to continue to evolve this and make it as meaningful as possible, given the time, you know, these difficult times that we're in. So, again, thank you very much for coming on the call tonight and joining us. And at this time, I'm going to pass it back to Jennifer, so she can get the rest of the evening started.
Thanks a lot, Mary Ann. I appreciate it. Okay, so logistics is what I promised everybody. So, this is just kind of a little introduction on what we're going to be doing tonight. So, the first thing I want to do is just introduce the staff that you see in front of you. So, the first person I'm going to introduce, because they're the one that I see, is Keisha Williams. So, she's with our Toxics Unit. She's going to be able to participate on our panel discussion, which will happen after a short presentation. And she'll be able to answer questions about toxics and things like that that you might have. I have Erica Wolf with us today as well. She's from our SIP unit, our State Implementation Plan Unit, and she has a lot of expertise with non-attainment and questions like that she'll be able to answer. Erin Moran, she is our Enforcement Specialist. So, you're going to be primarily hearing from her tonight, and probably myself as well, if I'm being honest. But she's going to be giving the majority of the presentation, talking to you all about our enforcement process, where we are in this, and how your participation is going to make an impact. Katie Koster is the Inspector for US Steel, so she is going to be able to answer any questions you might have on inspections, violations, things like that. Then I also have Susan Kilmer, and she is with our Air Monitoring Unit. So, she'll be participating in the panel discussion as well, be able to answer any questions that you have about air monitors. So, what we're going to go over tonight is... And you guys can go ahead if you want to turn your cameras off, except for Erin, leave yours on, please, because I'm going to pass the torch over to you in just a minute. So, the first thing we're going to do is do a short information session. If you were on the meeting that we had a little bit ago, it's going to be very similar. We did learn some things from that meeting, so we made a little bit of adjustments in our presentation. But we do sort of want to lay the groundwork of why we're here tonight, and also give you some information about the enforcement process, because we don't often go out for a public comment on enforcement action. So, it's really important that we be able to kind of give you a little bit of information on that, so you'll be able to hopefully ask us some questions about things that don't make sense. So, after the presentation, we'll do the question-and-answer session. I really want to make sure we talk about how you can submit an official comment. So, tonight is not your only opportunity to do that. We have a variety of other different ways that you can if you're not comfortable either speaking or you're not quite ready to type something in our chat box tonight. The public comment period stays open until July 13th, so you still have plenty of time to make a comment if you want to. We are going to do an official hearing. So, how that's going to work tonight is because we're on a virtual meeting, we're going to go through that short presentation. We're going to answer any of the questions that you may have. And then we're going to go to that official hearing either at 7:00 or when the question-and-answer session is done, whatever comes first. I want to talk to you guys about where you can find other information and then how you can contact us with other questions. So, just to kind of give you some other information, your lines are going to be muted during the webinar. If you have any questions, you can submit them into your question-and-chat box, and I'll show you how to do that in a minute. We are going to be recording this webinar, and once we're done, we will close caption it and post it on our YouTube page. So, I'll share that link with everybody who's on the line tonight. So, the meeting's going to work like this. We're going to do the... If you have a question, you can type the word "question" and type it into the question box. If you have a comment, so something that you want to put on the record later, you can just type "comment" and then type whatever you want your comment to be. And I'll remind you of this in a little bit. You can also submit comments by email to Erin. She's, remember, the Enforcement Specialist. And her email is moran@michigan.gov. And because we might have some people calling in who can't see the screen, I'm just going to spell that out really quickly. So, that's M as in Mary, O as in octopus, R as in rain, A as in apple, N as in Nancy, E as in elephant, @michigan, all spelled out, .gov as in government. You can also phone in a comment to our voicemail box, and that number is 517-284-0900. So, once we get to the Q&amp;A portion, if you want to ask a question, you can raise your hand. And I did notice there is a hand up already. So, if you have the ability to put your question in the question box, at least for right now, that might be best. But you can see your question box on the screen. This is what it looks like. It's kind of confusing, which is why I wanted to show you what it looks like. If you see a green arrow on your hand-raising icon, that means that your hand is down and you have an opportunity to raise your hand. If you see the red arrow or the downward-pointing arrow, that means your hand is already up. And if you... When you're done asking your question, you can put it down. So, people that are participating online tonight will have an opportunity to either verbalize a question or, I'm sorry, to verbalize a comment once the comment period starts. Okay, so Erin, this is where I'm going to pass it over to you. So, I'm going to go ahead and mute my line, and we will get you going on your presentation. So, go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thanks, Jen. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Erin Moran. I'm the Lead Enforcement Specialist for this legal settlement with US Steel, and I am one of the multiple Air Quality Division staff involved in this case. So, first in this presentation, we're going to start with an overview of the Air Quality Division and enforcement process. And then after that, we're going to talk about the proposed consent order with US Steel. So, we all know that pollution comes from many different things, such as big farms, fuel-burning vehicles, and various industrial sources. The overall mission of Air Quality Division, or AQD, is to protect public health and the environment. The AQD has the authority to do this by regulating industrial sources. And I apologize if there's some awkward pauses and just want to make sure I don't advance the slides too far. There we go. So, the AQD is separated into different functions. For example, Air Quality Staff monitor levels of air pollutants, and they look at different toxics to make sure public health is protected. We also conduct inspections of regulated facilities, and we review applications and write permits for sources of air pollutants to ensure the operations comply with our rules and regulations. So, enforcement falls under the realm of checking for compliance with rules and permits. So, in this slide, I'd like to give a simple overview of the steps of the enforcement process. What we call escalated enforcement is a legal process by which a company is able to resolve violations with the state of Michigan. So, this flowchart here shows the steps of the enforcement process. So, first, a district inspector selects and then visits a company or any source of pollutants to make sure the company is following the state and federal rules and regulations, and also the conditions of any permit that the company may have. A district inspector can also request and review a company's records. The inspector then evaluates their findings during the inspection or records review. If the inspector finds a violation, then a violation notice is sent to the company to officially let them know that we have found violations and to give the company a chance to resolve the violations. If the company is not able to resolve the violations in a timely manner, or if there are multiple and/or ongoing violations, or if a violation is what is called a high-priority violation, the district may send, or what we call escalate the violations, to enforcement. And once these violations come to the enforcement unit, and that is where I work, once we receive escalated enforcement referral from the district office, we send an enforcement notice to the company. This enforcement notice lets the company know that the violations from the violation notice will need to be resolved through the legal enforcement process. After that, the enforcement staff and district staff meet with the company to discuss how the violations will be resolved through this legal process. In a case such as this with US Steel, the legal agreement is called a consent order. So, once the AQD staff and the company agree on the terms and conditions of the consent order, the consent order is posted online for a public notice and comment period. And this is where we are now in the process. The AQD holds a public hearing if one is requested or if the case or company is high-profile. For US Steel, tonight is the night that we will be holding the public hearing, and that will be after this presentation. So, after the public hearing, AQD addresses all substantive comments from the public. If there is demand from the public on an item that the AQD is able to change in the consent order, then AQD may go back to the company and propose changes to the consent order. If no changes will or can be made, the company and AQD sign the consent order, and after that, the company is legally required to complete the requirements of the consent order. So, next, I'd like to talk about what the goals of AQD's enforcement program are. First, enforcement ensures that the state and federal rules and regulations are met to hold violators accountable. If a company violates these rules and regulations, then enforcement can be used as a tool to bring the company back into compliance. Second, enforcement serves to level the playing field. So, this ensures that similar businesses are doing similar compliance actions at their facilities by investing in environmental compliance. A company shouldn't be allowed to gain an economic advantage by not complying with the rules, which may allow them to, for example, sell their product at a better price or avoid costs of environmental compliance, such as purchasing any air pollution control equipment that they otherwise would be required to have. Third, enforcement serves to create a deterrent effect to the regulated community. So, any company that creates air emissions must follow the relevant rules and regulations. If these rules and regulations are broken, then Eagle's enforcement divisions can then enforce legal action and fines. So, the previous points that I just made in this slide and discussed work together to compel compliance within the regulated community. And compliance with air quality rules is key in protecting public health and the environment. So, when can enforcement happen? There are multiple ways that violations that we cite can end up being escalated to enforcement. Our district staff are key in monitoring compliance throughout the state. Any violation observed during an inspection or records review is documented. District staff also respond to complaints received from members of the community, and they can find and cite violations as a result of a complaint. District staff also review test plans and results, monitoring, record-keeping, and reporting requirements, and they do all that to check for violations. So, in the case here with US Steel, Air Quality Staff found violations as a result of reviewing test results and also by observing violations during inspections of the facility. Lastly, a company can end up in enforcement by failing to meet their permit requirements or by failing to meet deadlines to come into compliance. So, now I'm going to answer some specific questions about the enforcement process. So, firstly, what is escalated enforcement? Escalated enforcement is the legal process which we use to resolve the violations that were cited and sent to enforcement to be resolved. Also, what is a consent order? A consent order is a legally binding contract between the company and the state. It contains a compliance program to resolve the alleged air quality violations and to prevent future violations. It contains a monetary fine and stipulated fines for any future violations of the consent order. A consent order resolves all outstanding violations through the implementation of a compliance plan or compliance program. Once a company completes the compliance program that is written in the consent order, AQD considers the violations to have been resolved. And 90% of the violations that are escalated to enforcement are resolved through an administrative consent order. So, now I'm going to take a little sidestep away from the current case for just one slide. So, you may be aware of existing enforcement actions with US Steel, so I'm going to summarize those here. So, US Steel is currently legally bound to three enforcement actions, not including this proposed consent order. These include two consent orders from 2016 and one consent decree from 2016. The consent decree is different from the consent orders as it is a joint settlement between US Steel EPA and the states of Michigan, Illinois, and Indiana. So, first, I want to talk about Consent Order 22-2016. This consent order resolved violations of the pickle line. These violations occurred in 2015. Since that time, additional violations at the pickle line occurred. Because of these additional violations, Consent Order 22-2016 will be avoided, and under the proposed consent order, US Steel will do additional testing and corrective actions to ensure the pick line is operating properly. So, if violations of the proposed consent order occur, US Steel will be subject to stipulated fines from Consent Order 22-2016 for a longer period of time. Next consent order. violations of a unit called the Argonne Sturstation. There are no overlapping violations in this current proposed consent order and Consent Order 1-2016. So, that 2016 consent order will be effective until termination. Lastly, the 2016 Joint Consent Decree is a multi-state and EPA action, as I said before. So, this action addressed numerous violations at multiple US Steel facilities. So, for the facility in Michigan, the decree required US Steel to comply with visible emission requirements, a unit called the BOP shop, as well as implement other corrective actions at the facility. So, any visible emission violations that occur at the BOP shop are addressed under the terms of the consent decree. So, if you're looking at the violation notices that we have for US Steel, on October 12th of 2018, there was a violation issued for the visible emission exceedances at the BOP shop, and that was covered under the consent decree, and US Steel took corrective actions to address these exceedances. So, for all of these enforcement actions, AQD continues to monitor compliance and ensure that US Steel meets the requirements of all of these enforcement actions. So, now on to the current proposed consent order. This slide outlines a summary of the different parts of US Steel's consent order. So, I'm going to go into more detail about these points in the coming presentation slides. This proposed consent order identifies the violations that AQD found at US Steel. This proposed consent order contains a compliance program, which US Steel will be legally required to follow. US Steel will be required to pay a penalty of $79,227 due within 30 days of when the proposed consent order becomes effective. They will also be required to complete a supplemental environmental project and spend $300,000 on this environmental project. And also, this consent order includes stipulated fines for any violations of this proposed consent order. So, this map shows the locations of the different parts of US Steel's facility in River Rouge and Ekorz. So, the top area that we have highlighted is Zug Island, and this is the location of the blast furnaces and slag pits. The middle area that we have highlighted is where the hot strip mill is located. And the bottom highlighted area is the location of the BOP shop, the pickle line, and other steelmaking and finishing operations. So, next, I want to talk about US Steel's violations that we will be resolving in this proposed consent order. Two violations were from the unit called the Number Five Pickle Line, which I'm just going to refer to as the Pickle Line from here on. The first violation was an exceedance of hydrochloric acid. The limits in US Steel's permit for hydrochloric acid are 18 ppMv and 1.64 pounds per hour. And when US Steel conducted their tests, they measured the hydrochloric acid emissions at 54 ppMv and 3.55 pounds per hour. So, these measurements exceeded those limits that are in their permit. Since this violation, US Steel has... Excuse me. retested this hydrochloric acid emission limit twice, once in September of 2018 and once in December of 2019. And the hydrochloric acid emission limit was passed in both of these tests. The other violations in this consent order were all visible emission exceedances from two blast furnaces and one of the associated slag pits. And there were four violation notices sent to US Steel for visible emissions violations. So, now I'm going to talk about the compliance program or compliance plan for each of these items that we have within that consent order. So, we're fairly going to be legally required to follow this compliance program to prevent similar violations in the future. The pickle line, as I said, was the source of hydrochloric acid emission exceedances, and there were also violations for improperly operating the pickle line scrubber. To address these violations and prevent future violations from happening, you will still, we will be required to comply with the hydrochloric acid emission limits in its permit, submit a plan to repeatedly test to show compliance with the hydrochloric acid emission limits. So, AQD will review and approve this test plan. If this plan is insufficient, then AQD will request that US Steel make the changes to this test plan before we will approve the plan. US Steel must also ensure that they are properly operating their equipment to prevent excess hydrochloric acid emissions. And so, for this, they will submit and implement an updated operation and maintenance plan. Again, AQD will review and approve this plan and require changes if needed. And just to clarify here, to implement a plan means that they must follow the plan as written and approved by AQD. So, continuing with the visible emissions portion of the compliance plan. As I mentioned earlier, the visible emissions exceedances came from two blast furnaces and one of the associated slag pits. Under the proposed consent order, US Steel must comply with the visible emission limits that are written in its permit. There are multiple steps that US Steel will be required to take to prevent excess visible emissions. First, US Steel will upgrade the slag pit spray system, which is part of the blast furnace system, to better control visible emissions. US Steel will also submit and implement malfunction abatement plans for the equipment or parts of the equipment that were the source of the visible emissions violations. This will help to ensure that US Steel is properly addressing any malfunctions that may cause excess visible emissions. So, again, AQD will review and approve these plans and require changes if needed. US Steel must also do more frequent visible emissions readings for the equipment at the source of the visible emissions violations. And also, US Steel will submit more frequent visible emissions reports to AQD that describe the corrective actions taken for any of the visible, any future visible emissions exceedances. So, now I'm going to discuss the idling provision that is included in the consent order. As you may know or have seen in the news, US Steel is idling different parts of their plant, and this has affected different parts of this consent order. First, what is the definition of idling? Idling means stopping or cessation of production for a period of 30 days or more. In this consent order, there are provisions that will kick into place if US Steel idles the pickle line or either of the blast furnaces. On March 31st of this year, US Steel idled the iron and steelmaking parts of their facility. And this includes both of the blast furnaces and the associated slag pit that are covered under this proposed consent order. So, what happens now under the proposed consent order since US Steel has idled the two blast furnaces? So, upon the effective date of this proposed consent order, it is likely that the blast furnaces will still be idled. So, parts of the compliance plan relevant to the blast furnaces will be postponed. The pickle line will likely still be operating, so US Steel will have to comply with the relevant parts of the compliance plan for that process. But upon the restart of any of the processes that are idled, US Steel must immediately resume following the compliance plan. So, next, I will talk about US Steel's penalty. Just to reiterate, overall, US Steel will pay $300,000 for the supplemental environmental project, and they will also pay a penalty of $79,227 to the State of Michigan General Fund. The AQD uses EPA's penalty policy to calculate monetary penalties. We do this for every case that is resolved through enforcement, and Michigan's supplemental environmental project policy also plays this role, a role in this penalty calculation. So, the EPA's penalty policy lays out what the fine amount should be for each violation, and then those amounts are added up. The policy considers the actual or possible harm to the environment or to achieve the goals. And to complete the penalty, the policy evaluates the amount of pollutants that are emitted over the allowed permitted levels, the sensitivity of the environment, the toxicity of the pollutants, the length of the violations, and the size of the violator. In this case, AQD also considered the quality of the proposed supplemental environmental project. So, once the appropriate factors were determined, the initial penalty amount was calculated from the penalty policy. That initial calculated penalty is offered to the company, and then we come to a final settlement amount. Factors such as litigation risk, the company's willingness to cooperate to resolve the violations, and US Steel's history of noncompliance were taken into account in determining this final settlement amount. So, for the final topic for tonight that I'm going to present to you, I'm going to talk about the supplemental environmental project that US Steel is going to complete as part of this proposed consent order. First, what is a supplemental environmental project? This is an environmental project or a public health project that a company volunteers to do as part of a consent order. The project must go above and beyond what is required by law and provide added benefits to the community or environment that has been affected by the violations. So, for this project, US Steel has agreed to tear down the abandoned and deteriorating Veterans Memorial Ice Rink, also called Dan Rainey Hall in River Rouge. This building will be demolished to the bare ground, and then the ground will be leveled and filled, and grass seed will be planted on top of that ground. This demolition includes properly removing and disposing of any asbestos, refrigerants, PCBs, and mercury, which will reduce public exposure to these harmful substances and also clean up the blighted property. Again, they're required to spend $300,000 on this project. Once this proposed consent order is effective, Once this proposed consent order is effective, US Steel has forty-five days to start the project. And then the project should be completed within four hundred days of the effective date of this proposed consent order. So this is a map of the location of the supplemental environmental project, which is in River Rouge. On the left is a zoomed out map of the area. The small highlighted point is the location of the project. You can see US Steel to the right or east part of the map, and then Jefferson Avenue is kind of the big highlighted road that is to the left or west of the area. And on the right is a zoomed in map of the area. So the building to be demolished is in the highlighted square and is next to the Dan Rainey baseball field. The surrounding streets are Walnut Street to the north, Richter Street to the east, Genesee Street to the west, and Great Lakes, East Great Lakes Street to the south. So that is my last talking point of the evening, so I will turn it back over to Jen for the question and answer session.
All right. Thanks a lot, Erin. So we have some questions that came in, which is great. You guys don't all know me, but if you did, you would know how much I love the questions. It's my favorite part. So if I can have my panelists start turning their cameras back on, and we're going to go over a couple of things here just to remind everybody how to raise your hand and that kind of stuff. So if you have a question right now, you don't need to type the word question. You can, if that makes more comfortable, either way. We'll save the typing in of comments till we get to the actual hearing portion. But again, I just want to remind you that if you can raise your hand to ask a question and speak, and that's perfectly fine. If you want to do that, you don't have to, no pressure. I know sometimes people don't feel comfortable in these things. But if you did want to do that, just remember that if you're seeing an up arrow on your hand, that means that you can, you may raise your hand. It doesn't mean your hand is already up. It's kind of confusing. And if you see the down arrow, that means your hand is down, so go ahead and click it, and that will raise your hand up. So again, before we get started on that, just to reintroduce my staff people that I have to talk to you tonight, you just heard from Erin. So again, she's our enforcement specialist. Katie Coster is our district staff person who inspects this facility on a very regular basis, so she can answer questions about that. I've got Keisha Williams from our toxics unit. She can answer questions about toxics, and maybe if you have other questions even outside of some US Steel stuff, some of these panel members will definitely be able to do that. So for instance, Susan Kilmer is from our air monitoring unit, and she'd be able to answer any questions you might have on air monitoring. Erica Wolf works in our state implementation plan unit, and she can answer questions you might have about nonattainment and things like that. If for some reason we don't have a staff person that can answer your specific question, we're more than happy to take that back with us and get that question answered for you. So we're going to start off here. I'm going to start going through the questions, and I know this looks weird what I'm looking, but I actually have to look on another computer over here. I know you guys can commiserate a little bit working, doing these from home. It's, it's a challenge, but. Okay, so Erin, this question's going to be for you, and quite a few of these are. This question goes back to the SEP. And it says, what is the need for the SEP? For instance, the building that US Steel is proposing to tear down, why does it need to be torn down? Or how, I guess maybe even, how did they come to pick that project specifically? It might be more of what the question is on this one.
Sure. So when a company who is in an enforcement action is working through the action with us, and they want to do a supplemental environmental project, it's at the company's discretion to pick where and what project they would like to do with AQD approval. So in this case, I believe that US Steel worked with the city of River Rouge and I believe the mayor's office to kind of figure out what projects were in the community that were available or that needed to be done. So I think this was something that may have been on the list of projects that the city of River Rouge wanted to be done. And I guess the reason for it is that it's a blighted property, and you know, there's asbestos concerns. I don't know if we can go back to the, you know, the Google slide, you can even see from Google Maps that it's, the building's falling down.
Yeah.
So because it is an old ice rink, there are refrigerant concerns. So that's, you know, more, I guess, chemicals in the environment. And so I guess by tearing down this blighted property, you know, it's going to create a space for something else to be built. And I think, I guess from what I've heard, it's not part of this project, but the city of River Rouge does have plans for this piece of land here.
So this goes really well into the next question, and that is regarding how much it's going to cost to tear this down. So I know when you talked about the supplemental environmental project, you said it was going to be three hundred thousand dollars that US Steel would have to spend to tear this building down. Is there any concern? I guess two things, like how did they get to that number specifically? And is there any concern that they might not meet that monetary obligation when they're doing the teardown of it? And if they don't, is there ramifications to that?
So I guess for the mon- the monetary portion, like they are legally required to spend this three hundred thousand dollars. So in, within the documents of the consent order that I guess are online and maybe have been emailed to people, there is also attached is the, the proposed supplemental environmental project. So within that project, there is a budgetary breakdown of how much they are going to spend on each portion of the project. So you know, this includes getting asbestos inspections, asbestos abatement, properly removing any of the contaminants that I mentioned in this, you know, building, and then, you know, the demolishing of the building. So that breakdown is there. And US Steel will have to provide AQD a report of, you know, what their expenditures were. They have to provide documentation and, you know, receipts and invoices of who they're billing and how much everything is, is costing. And so at the end of the project, you know, we'll get a final report. And if the company does not spend a full three hundred thousand dollars, then they will be required to pay the rest of that amount if they have not, you know, met that three hundred thousand dollar limit. So.
Okay, so they would have to pay that monetarily, just like the seventy-nine thousand, the difference. Okay.
In reality, it's a minimum of three hundred thousand dollars that they are legally required to spend.
Okay, so they have to pay the amount that it takes to get the job done right, is kind of what I'm hearing you say. And then if they don't meet the three hundred thousand, then they have to pay that monetarily into the same fund that the seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven goes in. Correct. So this isn't switching gears totally, but the question was the violations that you talked about being associated with the previous consent orders and consent decree, have those all been taken care of? And I'm not sure if you or Katie could speak better to that, but I'll let you, if you can't, Erin, then I'll let you pass that off to Katie, if you don't mind.
I believe they have, but I think I would pass it off to Katie because she is the one, you know, who checks her compliance with, you know, all of the requirements.
So Katie, can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. So yeah, all of the violation notices that we've issued, you know, basically in the last five years have been addressed either through the consent orders that Erin mentioned in her presentation, the AQD consent orders, or the joint consent decree, or this order that we're proposing tonight. So I, I wouldn't say they're resolved until the order is actually terminated. But the company is operating under the orders. There aren't any documented ongoing noncompliance issues. So there, you know, result, there's no compliance issues. But I would say the AQD doesn't consider them resolved until the consent orders or decree is fully complied with and then terminate.
So they're not just violating, continuing to violate those specific issues that are in there in real life, but the paper is what actually resolves those things that they've already taken care of. Is that correct?
Right. Right. AQD hasn't issued any violation notices for violations of these consent orders or decrees that they've entered into.
Okay.
That are active right now.
So this is going to go to you, Erin. This one is asking about, and maybe you can just reiterate that timeframe. And I think what, here's what I thought I heard you say, is that they have forty-five days to start the SEP project, and then they have four hundred days to complete it. And then what is the timeframe for them to have to pay the monetary fine?
So the monetary fine of the seventy-nine thousand dollars that has to be paid within thirty days of the effective date of the consent order. So when it's signed by all of the, you know, people who need to sign it. I guess for the, for the supplemental environmental project, the three hundred thousand dollars just needs to be spent, I guess, by the time that the project is completed. So, you know, when we receive the final report, you know, the project should be completed and all of the money should be spent.
Okay. So I'm trying to keep us on like in a similar path. So I know I'm skipping some of these questions, but I'm going to come back to all of them because there's one I have. I'm not really sure what the question is, so I will definitely come back to it. But this is a question about, going back to the SEP and how the SEP was chosen. The question was, and I'm not sure how much we as air quality division do with this part of it. So maybe you can speak a little bit more to this, and you'll understand what I mean in a second. But the question is, why wasn't the community included in the discussion of a SEP that would benefit surrounding communities that may have been impacted by all of US Steel's violations? So we have residents that live both near Zog Island and in River Rouge and the US Steel operation in Ekor. So maybe you could talk a little bit about our AQD's role in those kind of conversations if we have one, and I guess I'm not sure about that. And if we don't, then a little bit more about how those conversations tend to happen. And maybe if you know of a way that communities could participate more in that, if there's an availability to that, if you could talk about that. I know I just said like three things I wanted you to talk about, so if you forget one, we'll come back to it.
Okay, I'll just check in at the end to make sure I answered all those questions. So, you know, when a company is considering a supplemental environmental project, they're, you know, we approve it, but they're the ones that are going with the direction of what, I guess, project they want to do. We highly encourage, you know, talking with the community. And community involvement is one of the rating factors in the supplemental environmental project. So, you know, we can encourage as much, you know, community involvement as we can, but ultimately it's up to the company to, I guess, reach out to the community to see what projects were available. In this case, I believe you have still reached out to the city of River Rouge. And so I guess we can consider that the city of River Rouge is representing those people, but I guess in the community, but that said, you know, we definitely are looking into ways where the community can really get more involved with, I guess, seeing what sort of environmental projects that they want and they can do. So it's kind of hard in, within this, I guess, enforcement process because the enforcement process is a legal process, and so therefore it's confidential. And so we can't put any, I guess, we can't really put any information out there.
And to get to a certain point, right, then that's kind of the challenge of it. So we have to keep encouraging communities and companies to communicate with each other when these opportunities come up. Because this is, I mean, maybe it doesn't check all the boxes, but it is an opportunity for monies that would normally be spent on a penalty to go back into a community project, which is, you know, not every company takes advantage of that. And I wanted to, there was a question in here about the seventy-five percent mitigation. Can you talk a little bit more about that and what that, you know, what that means? Because that's kind of an interesting concept.
Sure. So the, within our, you know, supplemental environmental project policy, there are, I guess, different tiers of ratings, and based on the quality of the project, a company is allowed a certain mitigation percentage off of the penalty. So, you know, the higher that we can rate the project, the more, the bigger mitigation percent, I guess, it can get off of the original penalty. So in this case, we gave this project a high rating, and that corresponded to a seventy-five percent off of the original penalty amount. So there are some calculations involved with, you know, spreadsheets, and there's an EPA model that we, you know, put numbers into. And then to see like the cost of the project, it's a little complicated, but it's ultimately, you know, that seventy-five percent is, is coming off the original penalty. But they're still required to pay a certain percentage to the general fund. And then ultimately, if a company is doing a supplemental environmental project, the way the math, math works out is that they're going to be spending more money than if they were just settling to pay into the general fund.
Okay. So this, and I'm not sure if you don't have this off the top of your head, maybe we can get this. But the question was, how many violations were actually committed that were involved in this particular consent of, consent order? Sorry, can't speak tonight.
So how many violation notices?
It says how many violations, but I think we could talk about notices, and I'm not sure if you guys have specific numbers on violations themselves, but at least violation notices, if you have that off the top of your head.
Um.
Katie, do you know? We'll find for you if we don't know off the top of our head on that one. It's in, it's definitely in the paperwork. We can come back to you guys on that one. I'm sorry.
Seven or eight or nine total violations.
So this is a little bit different. This goes back to how we monitor the SEP project itself and ensure that the work is getting done. And the question goes to, you know, can you talk a little bit more about the requirements about the monitoring or what we do to ensure that the asbestos abatement is done properly during the demolition? And, and that kind of part of it, asbestos specifically, if you can.
Sure. So the US Steel has already hired a contractor to do one, I guess, what am I saying? Sorry, inspection for asbestos. And that was sent to AQD. We reviewed it and determined that another inspection needed to be done. So that is something that I believe is going, is the first item next on their list. So, you know, they'll do that inspection, this outside company, and then that, you know, review will be sent to us to AQD for review. So AQD does have oversight of, of, I guess, Michigan. You know, if this, you know, demolition abatement is not done properly, we will cite violations there.
So that would be going through our asbestos group, and they're going to be doing the same sort of inspections and notifications review that they would normally do. So, I mean, and this is one of those things. I know there's people on the line that live in the area and are concerned about, you know, like, it's great that there's going to be, this won't be there anymore, but also there's these other environmental things that come into play when demolishing this building. So being, you know, the eyes and ears on the ground over there, if, if you happen to be on and about the veterans memorial ice rink, and you see anything that stands out as not okay, please let us know. I mean, that is, we would hope you would do that because we definitely want to ensure that they're doing this demolition properly, and that's really important. It looks like we still have questions on the seventy-five percent mitigation. So I know that's confusing, and the question is, so the seventy, seventy-nine thousand is seventy-five percent less than what the fine would have been. So I don't, let's think about this again. So let's say, you know, the, the fine would have been, say, seven hundred, or three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Just say, I mean, I'm not sure if that's quite right. So I'm going to ask you, Erin, if I'm putting this in, if I'm understanding it right. And if I'm not, then please correct me. So it's three hundred and eighty thousand, say, as what the, the fine would have been. So instead of paying three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the general fund, the company is taking on this supplemental environmental project that must cost three hundred thousand dollars. So that way, that seventy-nine thousand dollars, eighty thousand dollars-ish will go, will be the monetary fine. The three hundred thousand goes into doing that SEP policy or into that SEP project. So the seventy-five thousand is, or the seventy-five percent is, that mitigation number came into where? That reduction comes into what part of that sort of calculation that we're talking about?
Yeah, so I think I can try to explain this a bit better, and I can give the numbers. So the seventy-five percent mitigation was applied to the final penalty that US Steel and AQD came to, which was two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. So that two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in combination with an estimated cost of the project that comes from the EPA model. Um, so that $297,000 in combination with an estimated cost of the project that comes from the EPA model, um, use that to evaluate the supplemental environmental project. So, um, you have the $297,000. And then, um, US Steel came to us and said, we're going to do this supplemental environmental project that will cost $300,000. So we take, you know, this, this is getting technical into this, this policy and, um, you know, this model. So we take that $300,000 and we put it into this EPA model. And depending on when the, um, you know, this money is going to be spent, because it's in the future and there are, we have to take into account inflation factors and whether there are any recurring costs in this project. Um, so that then spits out a number, um, which is the quote unquote, actual cost of the project. So, um, you know, taking into account these different numbers, um, the 75% is then, um, taken off of this calculated, you know, with the, um, SEP costs and then taken off of the original $297,000. So, um, in there, there is one of two numbers. I'd have to look in my spreadsheet to see exactly what they were, but there is a minimum penalty amount that is calculated. Um, and then that is what we use for the payment to the general fund. So the final penalty was that we came up with is the $297,000. But, um, ultimately, you still will be required to, you know, spend $300,000 on the supplemental environmental project and then also pay, um, the $79,000 to the general fund. So that combined together, um, ultimately though, they will spend, um, 379-ish thousand dollars. So I, I think, you know, if, if the person asking the question wants to kind of know more about how that 75% is applied, that's something, it's probably going to be a longer conversation.
So yeah, they could definitely call you because I still feel like it might be clear as mud to me. So, I mean, it's, it is a complicated and it is a calculation. So, um, if, we'll definitely give out Erin's contact information again at the end and feel free to call and have a conversation with her. Cause I think overall calculating enforcement penalties and, and that kind of thing, we could have a whole webinar on how that's done, probably like an instructional one, just because it is. It's one of those things and kind of focusing it down into a couple of minutes is a challenge. Um, so I think I figured out what this question was. So thank you for, um, helping me out there. So the question is, and is what chemicals were released by US Steel during the designated environmental incident? So I don't know what that is, so I'm, but I'm hoping that, um, Katie, maybe you know what, um, they're referring to here? Was it maybe a specific incident that, uh, US Steel had in the past? And they said it was sufficient enough to be reported to Eagle at one point.
I don't exactly know. Um, I don't know if the commenter is referring to the stack test that was failed at the pickle line, which would be hydrochloric acid emissions. Um.
Also, we'll see if we can get some more iteration or some more information on that. And if the person would like to speak out loud, just let me know and I will let you speak to that as well. Um, okay, so let's see here.
While you're looking for another question, um, I'd just like to go back, uh, page one of the draft consent or list of violations that we're resolving. And so it was six violation notices. Um, but each notice might have more than one alleged violation. So I don't know the total number of alleged violations. I, I, I know for the pickle line, for example, there were several violations in that one letter.
Okay.
But six violation notices are what is being resolved through this.
Okay, thank you. So this is kind of long and I, and I'm going to apologize because it is kind of hiding here a little bit. So I'm going to just read what it says. It says regarding US Steel's decision to indefinitely idle the Great Lakes facility, US Steel recently acquired a 49.9% interest in the new Big River Steel mini mill in Northwest Arkansas for 700 million in cash, with an option to buy the other 51% in four years. It seems US Steel has no intention of ever opening the plant again. And I'm assuming they mean this, our facility. Um, if so, as long as it idles, it will not be required to replace some of its machinery. Is that true? And does the consent order expire in five years? So can you talk a little bit about the idling situation, Katie? And then Erin, can you address the five year issue?
In terms of the idling, um, you know, all we know is that it has been presented as a temporary idle with, um, no specific timeframe. Um, so, you know, we can't say one way or the other if the facility is going to start back up again. Um, what happens in this case is, you know, all the permits that they have currently continue to be valid, um, a- and continue to exist. Um, up until the time the company decides, you know, if and when they decide to restart operations, if there was going to be major expenditures to certain parts of equipment or modifications to certain equipment, that might trigger the need for new permitting. Um, but in the meantime, it's basically the status quo.
Okay.
In terms of, you know, what permits they have and what regulations they're subject to.
So then Erin, can you talk a little bit about, um, consent orders and whether or not they expire? And kind of how that, that process works?
Sure. Um, so I guess in regards to the idling, um, yes, yes, if the, you know, parts of the, of US Steel are idled for five years, then, um, they won't have to do the, um, you know, relevant compliance requirements. But at the same time, um, you know, the equipment is operating. So I would hope that there aren't any air emissions or air emissions violations. Um, but when that five years is up, um, I think at that point we would have to, you know, evaluate the consent order and, you know, what steps US Steel has taken or, um, I guess needed to take in the compliance plan. Um, and you know, we can, in five years, but if there are any issues, we can also, um, deny a termination at the end of that five years. Um, and I guess for the future, you know, even if, um, we approve a termination and they are still idling, um, and then after six or seven years, they start up again, um, we're still going to be monitoring for compliance. Um, the fact that they have this consent order, um, will still exist and it will still be a factor in, um, consideration of any enforcement in the future, especially with these same units if they, if they start up again.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Landrum has been waiting so super patiently with her hand up. So I, she's been asking some great questions in the chat box, but I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, Ms. Landrum. So you should be able to speak now and ask your question, um, as soon as you want. So go right ahead.
Okay, um, thank you, uh, for this opportunity to speak. Can you guys hear me?
We sure can. You are loud and clear.
Okay, um, I have been, uh, working with the transition team in River Rouge and, uh, in, in conjunction with the things that are occurring in, uh, River Rouge. Um, and there was a $250,000 grant given by the county to assess, uh, that property over there at the ice rink as one of five properties. And if I'm not mistaken, I hope I'm correct, there was money given to demolish that piece of property already. So I think it's with, it, it, it would be, um, it would be, uh, to me, uh, worth you guys checking that out. Because if they're proposing to tear down a building that already has money to be torn down, that's for not. And, uh, in dealing with River Rouge and, um, the Great Lakes US Steel, there's no community trust. So, uh, the city of River Rouge has not been forthcoming with information to its own residents. And, uh, that has been noted for years and years and years. Uh, but with that being said, how does this address the overall problem of emissions at US Steel? They're tearing down one stationary place and it is not a source of emissions. The overall raw problem is the US Steel has been a bad actor in River Rouge and Ecorz, at Zog Island, at EES Coke Battery, as well as the operation in Ecorz at US Steel itself. What is being done for this SEP? If I'm not mistaken, this, if we were explained to us by the DOJ, that the SEP must address the pollution problem. The problem is they had emitted and violated, but now they're going to go to tear down a stationary, a building. That's not addressing the overall pollution emissions that this company emits. So I think that's, uh, there's a fallacy going on and there's some synonyms going on to allow them to propose a SEP without community involvement. That has been a thorn in the community side for years, not only in River Rouge, Ecorz and Southwest Detroit. It's been all over with Eagle. So it seems that the culture is still the same. The name has changed, but the culture is still the same. They allow industry to dictate, and I'm saying dictate, what to be done when the bad actor is the industry. And when, uh, I said DEI, when we were, when you were MDEQ, we were told that DEI was designated environmental incident. So the violations had to be recorded and for Eagle to know that they had went over and violated. So that means it's an incident that happened that was a, a allowable, uh, uh, that was not allowable, but should have been reported because they exceeded, they exceeded the amount that they, uh, have been allowed to emit. So my thing is addressing that SEP. It is not addressing the overall pollution that this company is committing. It, it, it egregious things that has been doing to the community for years. So the SEP to me is a fallacy. Tear down a stationary building that is not operating and emitting. The company itself is emitting. They emitted, uh, chloric acid, which went into the chem- community. So what is being done for, and SO2 and other chemicals? So what is being done to address the overall emissions pollution that they're putting into the, to, to the environment? In which that's what the SEP, uh, from, explained from the DOJ should address. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate it. So you asked a lot of questions. We are running up on seven. Well, we're a little bit after seven, but I want to make sure that we kind of address what you're talking about. Um, so as far as the potential monies that were set aside by the city of River Rouge to destroy, to demolish that building already. I mean, I don't, I know if Erin, I don't know if you know anything about that, but if you don't, um, it's definitely something that we can look into. That's a very good point. The other part of your concerns, I think, are, and I apologize that I've never heard that designated environmental incident. So I feel really stupid. So I really apologize. Um, I wrote it down so I can look it up. Um, but Katie, I don't know if you can talk a little bit about, I mean, I hear Ms. Landrum's concerns about, you know, what is being done about the emissions and those emissions exceedances, um, that kind of led us to this consent order in the first place. So I know we can't maybe, don't have time to maybe talk about all of US Steel and, and what's going on there. But if you could talk a little bit about, uh, what kind of inspections you're doing? And then maybe a little bit more about the stack testing that was done after those, um, hydrochloric acid incident, you know, after that stack test was failed and how they kind of came back into compliance with that. That at least get you a little bit, I think, Ms. Landrum, to some of your questions answered. And then of course, you know, we're always available for more. Um, after we do the public hearing later, if you want to stay on and, and talk with us some more too, we'd be happy to do that. So Katie, if you can talk about that a little bit, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I hear Ms. Landrum's concerns and, um, you know, her reference to all of the past, non-compliance and violations that have happened at the source. And, you know, I would agree, it's, it's not really addressed. Those, those violations and those exceedances aren't really addressed by the SEP. Um, I guess the place that it's more appropriately addressed in this process and order is through the compliance plan that we have in the draft consent order. So, you know, Erin kind of went through it in our presentation and I don't want to, you know, repeat, repeat things again. But just to summarize, like for the pickle line in terms of the fact that the company failed the stack test and they had an exceedance of, um, hydrochloric acid emissions, what we are requiring them to do to address that is, well, first of all, it so far is not an ongoing issue. The last two tests that they performed have been passed. Um, we've required them to test on a much more frequent basis so that if there's an issue that comes up, it will be, um, uh, found more quickly and addressed more quickly. Um, so that's, that's the once every six months that they're now being required to test. Whereas in the, um, federal requirements for a pickle line, it's actually two and a half years. So this is a much shorter timeframe. Um, the company's made some adjustments and upgrades to their scrubber, which is the air pollution control equipment, which controls the hydrochloric acid emissions. So we're, and those upgrades are above and beyond what's required in the regulations. So we're memorializing that into this operation and maintenance plan, meaning they're putting it into this document and they're committing to keep the scrubber in that enhanced state moving forward. And then if they don't, you know, there will be stipulated penalties involved, um, with any non-compliance on that front. Um, and then in terms of visible emissions, which is a whole separate area of the facility, um, which is more, um, related to the blast furnaces. Um, they're doing a lot more enhanced monitoring of their process, again, to address issues that arise, um, more quickly and more frequently. And also, um, inspecting more frequently parts of the process that can create these emission issues. And then putting these inspection plans and these maintenance plan, maintenance plans, you know, into documents, which they then have to follow and keep records to show that they're following to prevent these things from happening.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to have to move on to the hearing portion of the night. Um, I want to go over a couple of things and then, um, we'll definitely get to everybody's comments if you would like to make a comment on the record. So this is kind of a shift in the night where we're going from, um, being able to have a kind of Q and A and, and to going to taking specific comments on the record. So I want to just talk to you a little bit before we move on to the, me reading the hearing statement, to just remind you of ways that you can submit an official comment if you don't want to do it tonight. So tonight you'll be able to either type in your comment, if you want, just by typing the word comment and then your comment. And I will read that out loud or you can, um, speak your comment aloud for the record as well. If you want some more time to look at information we have, you can submit your comment by, um, US mail to the, to, um, Erin Moran in the enforcement section. Um, you can also email Erin your comment directly. So again, her email address is moran@michigan.gov. And it's M as in Mary, O as in octopus, R as in rain, A as in apple, and S as in Nancy, E as in elephant, at Michigan, all spelled out, .gov is in government. Or take advantage of our voicemail box. Um, we're happy to take comments on that as well at 517-284-0900. Um, you can also, if you, again, if you're not quite ready to make a comment tonight or you want to get a little bit more information, you can go to our enforcement public notice page and I'll provide you that, um, website a little bit later. And on that page, you'll find the proposed enforcement summary. Um, that's going to be available in Arabic and Spanish as well, if that's necessary for you. The, um, enforcement summary report, which is a little bit more detailed information. The proposed consent order is also on there. And then the recorded informational, initial informational session that we had a little bit ago will also be on that webpage. So again, if you want to make a comment on the record, but you don't want to speak out loud, just type the word comment and then put your comment in there. Um, or you, you will be able to raise your hand and I will call on you to speak. And I'll try to my, the best I can to call on people in the order they were received. We did have the ability tonight, when you registered, if you registered ahead of time, to say that you wanted to make a comment on the record. So those people will be called on first, just to let you know that. Okay, so we're going to go into the public hearing part. And this is where I'm going to have to read the sort of dry statement for you, um, before we get going. If you ladies would like to turn your cameras off, you can feel free to do that now. And if, I have to call on you again later after the hearing, I will do that. Okay, so please bear with me as this is a little bit dry. Um, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jennifer. My name is Jennifer Dixon and I am with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, known as Eagle. I will be serving as a hearing officer for this public hearing on a draft administrative consent order for United States Steel Great Lakes Works here in after referred to as U S Steel located in Ecorse, Michigan. Mary Andolehanti, Division Director of Eagles Air Quality Division, is the decision maker for this administrative consent order. The Air Quality Division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impact on human health and the environment. The law governing these responsibilities is Part 55 of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. We are here tonight to receive your comments on the draft consent order. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the draft consent order for U S Steel an opportunity to provide information the Air Quality Division can use in deciding whether to approve the consent order as written or if there are additional issues to be considered. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria Eagle must use in making a decision. For example, concerns related to local zoning, truck traffic and noise are not within Eagle's authority. In addition, some of you may want to express your support or opposition to the draft consent order. We'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the enforcement action. Please note the proposed terms for the draft consent order are brought to you tonight in the form of a draft agreement. This does not mean the draft agreement has already, that a decision has already been made. Instead, it reflects an initial agreement in which the company must pay a monetary penalty, complete a supplemental environmental project, which includes the demolition of the Veterans Memorial Ice Rink or the Dan Rainey Hall in River Rouge, and agrees to additional penalties if compliance is not maintained. Everything in the draft consent order remains open for comment and further consideration by the division. We look forward to your comments on these issues. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision on the draft consent order. The public comment period for the proposed consent order began in May and will end at midnight on July 13, 2020. Additional information can be submitted until then and it will be considered when Eagle makes a decision. Additional comments can be submitted to Erin Moran. After the close of the public comment period, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality related comments will be considered, at which point a final decision on the consent order will be made by the decision maker. The decision maker may reject the consent order, approve as drafted, or approve with amendments. If approved, the decision must specifically must specify which provisions of the draft consent order, if any, have been changed in the final consent order and the reasons for those changes. In all three scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone who was on the original mailing list, sorry, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period and anyone who attended the public hearing will be directed, directly notified of the decision. As stated previously, you may submit a written comment at any time to the email address or the phone number provided. You may also type the word comment into your question box and submit your comment. If you do not want me to read your comment, please state do not read. If you would like to make a verbal comment, you may raise your hand and I will unmute your line so you can speak. We will limit your comment time to three minutes. If you are speaking, I will let you know when you have about 30 seconds left and I will do my best to address commenters in the order your hands were raised. But please bear with us as technology has challenges with doing that. Please recognize department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed consent order and to listen to those comments. Thank you so much for your attention and I will now begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement. So just as a reminder, we won't be responding to your comments during this time. Our first commenter is Senator Chang. Senator Chang, I'm going to unmute you. Even if you'd like to make a comment, you may do so. Okay, there you go. You should be unmuted. There you go. Now it's working. I apologize.
That's okay. Sorry. I thought maybe I was doing something wrong. Thanks so much for this opportunity and for holding this public hearing. I appreciate it and I also really appreciate our residents and activists attending today and asking really good questions and bringing up really important points. I just had a couple of really quick things that I wanted to say. One is that, you know, the demolition of the ice arena is actually something that I've definitely heard from residents about ever since I, you know, took office and even before then, as something that they would like to see happen. And it's been years since then. So, you know, I am pleased to see that this is part of the proposed consent order. Although I do also hear very much the concerns that it doesn't necessarily directly attract air quality concern. So I hope that, you know, we can find ways to, like if there's money left over from that or if there are other things that the company could commit to. In addition, I think that will be very really good to explore, whether it's, you know, other supplemental environmental projects in the future or something else. And then the second thing that I wanted to point out, although it may not be able to be addressed by the department, as a reminder to the department as well as to members of the public who are listening. And I I remain always concerned that, you know, with all of these consent orders with the fines that get paid to the state, it goes into the general fund and does not necessarily come back to the affected community. And that's something that I've heard from residents about for many years. And so as a result, myself and also Representative Carter have reintroduced legislation this term, Senate Bill 60, and I can't remember the household number. But it, what it would do is make sure that funds that are paid by violating companies through these consent orders, that money would actually come back to the community in the form of grants and other things to ensure better enforcement and training and mitigation, whether it's buffers or monitoring or school air filters or anything else. So, you know, it just remains to be a concern, you know, over the years. Many of us have been to so many of these hearings and have expressed frustration. And I would just echo that frustration again tonight that those funds may not necessarily come back to this community, which has been affected. And so just wanted to put that out there. But thanks again for this opportunity and looking forward to seeing this far.
Thank you so much, Senator Senator Chang. I appreciate your comments. And we had one other person who had indicated they wanted to make a comment. I don't think that they're on the call tonight. But if Heather Heather McGlon was the person who had stated they wanted to make a comment. And like I said, I don't think that they're on tonight. If you are, if you could to, you know, maybe you logged in under a different name, which is completely acceptable, but maybe you could just let me know in the question box that you would still like to speak out loud. We did have a comment that was written in. All right, and I'm going to read it to you guys just a second here. Okay, so it says fine paid fines paid for environmental violations need to be used for mitigating environmental impacts as opposed to going to the state's general fund. Note Senator Chang's bill, Senate Bill 0060, Air Quality Enforcement Fund, which will create a fund for this purpose. Supplemental environmental projects should mitigate the impact of the environmental violations as opposed to other purposes. A formal process needs to be set up for community consultation in a meaningful way in order to develop supplemental environmental projects. A formal process needs to be, I apologize, I just read that. S D E V will also be submitting written comment before the 7/13/20 deadline as well as working to encourage residents and neighboring communities to make a comment. So thank you very much, Maggie, for your comment. I appreciate that. Want to make sure I'm not missing anything here. So again, if you would like to make a comment on the record, you may do so by either typing that into the question box. And I do have a comment from Ms. Landrum again. Ms. Landrum, hold on one second. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. There you go, Ms. Landrum. You have the floor for your comment.
Okay, thank you so much. I would ask that the Eagle go back and review the terms and conditions of SEP under the guidelines of the federal government. Because if the SEP is to address the overall violation, the overall violation is air emissions that violated the air quality and review that. And if the guidelines say that you must address the issue, that this SEP be rejected, I oppose this SEP in its present state and that the SEP be amended to address the overall problem of the violation that was committed by the company. Because right now, the building is not a source of emissions. So therefore, it is not violating the air quality. And so I would ask you to just look at that. And I support the funds that are assessed to the company be put into a fund to be put into projects for the to benefit the community. So that's what I want you would like to ask the Eagle to do, to review the terms and conditions of an explanation of what a SEP is and how it is to be addressed. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Landrum. I appreciate your comment. Just looking to see if anyone else has their hand raised. And right now I don't see anyone and I don't see anyone else in the comment box. So just as a reminder, you know, you don't have to make a comment tonight if you don't want to. There are other ways to make comments as far as the ones that we had already addressed, including via U S mail, via email, voicemail. We're happy to continue to answer questions after this meeting is over. If people would like to contact staff directly, and I'll definitely give you that information again. Just want to dilly-dally here a minute in case anyone wants to change their mind and make a comment for the record tonight. Want to make sure you all have an opportunity to do that, if you would like to do that. Okay. Okay, not seeing any other comments. I do have to read a closing statement for you to officially close the meeting or the hearing portion of the meeting. Okay, thank you, Ms. Landrum. She hasn't got another comment and I'm going to go ahead and read that for the record. It says, I oppose this consent agreement in its present state. The SEP should address the pollution emissions violations. So Ms. Landrum, thank you so much for your comment. All right, I'm just going to check one more time. Okay. So, all right, thank you. This comment is from Ms. Stritzk... I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading your name because my eyes are bad, not because your name is bad. So I apologize, Maggie, for that. This comment is from Maggie and it states, "U S Steel should be required to cover the cost of producing and mailing information to every household in a five mile radius, explaining the types of symptoms and health impacts of exposure to hydrochloric acid." So thank you very much for your comment. Right, just want to check one more time. And thank you all for your patience with our technology. I greatly appreciate it. Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and read that closing statement and that will officially close the hearing for tonight. So thank you so much for your comments and cooperation tonight. We really appreciate your interest in the draft consent order for U S Steel as well as the time you took to be here. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period ends on July 13, 2020. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period and anyone who attended this public hearing or our previous meeting will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed permit. So that closes the hearing and I thank you again. If you'd like to stay on, I do have a couple of other things I'd like to share with you tonight before we actually officially sign out outside of the public hearing portion of the meeting. Just basically who to contact if you have further questions. So this slide contains all the members of our panel and I understand if people are just calling in, you won't be able to see this and I apologize for that. But I will give you Erin Moran's email address one more time verbally. And if you have that and you would like to email her with your questions, she'll make sure that a staff person who is appropriate to answer that question gets back with you. So again, her email address is moran@michigan.gov. That's M as in Mary, O as in octopus, R as in rain, A as in apple, N as in Nancy, E as in elephant, at Michigan.gov. So please feel free to get ahold of any of us if you have further questions about this. So if you would like a copy of the slides from tonight, we can definitely provide provide those upon request. But the recording of tonight's meeting will be closed captioned and a copy of it will be available on YouTube. We will notify you via email and it will also be on our website in the next few days. With the mandatory layoff days, I just did want to warn you that that might be a little bit delayed. So in the interim, if you have any questions, please go ahead and get ahold of Erin or even myself is totally fine. Let's see. Yes, and I will definitely email you at the email that you provided in the chat box. So thank you, Ms. Landrum. I appreciate that. So with that being said, I do really want to sincerely thank all of you for taking the time tonight. I know this is a lot out of your schedule and a lot of people have much more on their plates than I can even imagine. So from the Air Quality Division, again, we really appreciate your time and attendance tonight. If you have any questions, please feel free to get ahold of Erin or myself and we will get those questions answered for you. So hope you have a great rest of your night and we'll talk to you soon.